Follow meeting to order, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion of the agenda? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes, we have minutes from May 8th and we have minutes from May 16th. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for Monday, May 9th, 2022, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I see there the attached list of attendees was not there. And on page two, right at the top, TEARSA is spelt wrong, is T-E-A-R-S-A on the very first line. And then down under the due diligence, you're talking about a Blaine picket. It should be Wayne picket. And further down, it should be W. picket. Let's see, there's on page four, down in the last paragraph, where it says, "It's the law in Castleton should follow as everyone else," is the way it should read. Other than that, I find no errors.
Okay. Any other corrections? Joe?
Anything, Joe? Just in that same sentence that Mary Lee referenced, "it's" should be spelled I-T-I-P-O-S-T-R-I-S. And that's it. That's it.
Dick?
On page one, under citizens' comments and concerns, second line, M. Jones stated that he reached out to animal control and was told they were not issued. He's talking about the tickets. I thought you said that they were actually issued, but they were not in error. Am I correct in that?
Yes. And there was, there was two tickets that were issued.
So that needs to be changed, that they were not issued in error. Okay? That's all I got in the discussion.
Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as amended or correction, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for the special meeting on Monday, May 16th, 2022, as presented.
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion, corrections? Mary Lee, do you have something there?
No, everything's fine.
Okay. Joe?
Fine.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Minutes are approved. Citizens' comments and/or concerns not on the agenda. Yes. Joe Bruno?
Joe Bruno, I'm here as the planning chair tonight, and I believe you guys have received a letter from me from your last meeting. And I read the minutes and it said that you wanted more information. So I'm here to try to answer any questions you might have. But if you read the letter, basically what we're asking is, number one, I think that these solar companies should, or developers, should have a surety bond or an escrow money put into account. Line of credit, we all know, can come and go. If the company bellies up, they wouldn't give us the answer, they couldn't give us the answer. What would be the worth of the line of credit? I know in my past, I had good credit, and then I didn't have such good credit. Now I have good credit again. So I believe that that could happen anyway. The other question that I had was about ag land. The meeting that we had, the public meeting we had, no one there could really comment on ag land. I went to one of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission meetings, and I brought that up about ag. And so they asked me, well, what areas in town are zone ag? Well, we don't have an agricultural zone. However, all of our zones in town, agriculture is allowed in. There's not one zone in town that you can't have agriculture. So I say the whole town has agricultural zone. The part about losing the industrial properties, we have three sites in Castleton that are zoned industrial. The proposed site on exit five is one of them, just one. I don't see anyone knocking the doors down right now to come in here with an industrial business. However, if this solar array is allowed over there, you can forget about anything going on there for the next 25 years. And I would suspect some of us might not be here then, but it will probably continue to be some sort of renewable energy, whether it's solar panels or if they come up with some new thing, I don't know. And finally, I guess, why, or how many more solar arrays are we going to allow in our town, or do we have to allow in our town? I found it interesting that this company approached the town four or five years ago about putting in two solar arrays in that same area. They were 500 watt. And I guess the smaller size have to be preferred sites by the town, which the town said, no, they're not preferred sites. One was by well number one, the other one was where they're proposing this new one. So they came back with a 2.2 megawatt, which is going to take up 18 acres of land, 10 of which is being used as a cornfield right now. So I guess what I was asking from the board is just some sort of support, because I'm going back to the next planning, Rutland Regional Planning meeting, they not having one this month, so we won't have one until June. But they were pretty receptive to my concerns, and they were certainly going to support me if the town did. So at this point, the only committee that I have any support from is the planning committee. So I'm asking the board to at least consider, and you don't have to do it tonight, but if you could do it maybe at your next meeting before I go back to the Rutland Regional Planning, just some sort of letter of support that I think Castleton has enough solar right now. I don't, and I don't know the right words. If you just would look at the letter that Jonas helped me draft, I want to present this to the Rutland Regional Planning. They know my concerns, because I've already been there, and I, the people that were there that night agreed with me that, you know, I mean, we've got one up on Sand Hill now, 18 acres. We're going to have another one down on exit five, which I just cannot believe that they couldn't find a better site than that. So, and again, is there something else that the board would like from me, as far as any information that I could provide for you? I think unfortunately, these things don't get advertised that well, until all of a sudden the neighbor sees it in their backyard, and then they're upset. I certainly have done my best to try to make the public aware of what's going on on exit five. We also were involved in trying to stop the one on Sand Hill, which we did not succeed. But again, I'm not giving up this fight yet. They haven't made a decision. I don't believe the PUC has drafted a decision yet. So, here I am.
Any questions for Joe from the board? Joe?
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we have any say about it. It didn't seem at the last meeting they went to that it was up to the town at all. The state was just going to say, this is the way it is.
Well, unfortunately, Mary Lee, I felt the same way, and after I don't know how many meetings, we were asked to sign a letter of commitment, which I did, because I felt like you did. I mean, they went over our heads. However, when I signed that, I also had written on that letter of commitment that we would like escrow or a surety bond, and we would also like some sort of a, an idea of what that credit line would be worth. And we haven't heard one from them yet. So it's not carved in stone. I mean, we need to make, the town needs to make the PUC aware of our concerns that there's places for these things. I mean, up on a gravel pit, in Corey's, places that we're not using that property anymore. But right in plain sight on exit five, in my opinion, is probably one of the worst places that we could have a solar array. So we're not giving up, Mary Lee. I know you're concerned about the ag land also, and I said it at my last meeting, I don't want to ramble, but I'm not one to tell someone what to do with their land. However, I think that the state needs to come up with some sort of program for large parcel owners like yourself to maintain your property and not be beat up by the taxes. This is basically the reason some of these people are leasing or renting their land, so they don't have to pay these heavy taxes.
Other questions? Joe, do you have something?
Yeah. Joe, my, my question really is about that earlier letter. I think it was maybe April 11th, is that proper, the correct date? In which you say you're not going to oppose this project any further.
Well, no, that, what the letter said was, that letter of commitment was, they had told us some of the things that they would do, like screening. One question I had asked about the trees, what are you going to plant there? Well, one comment was, there's, there's plenty of native vegetation there now. Well, take a ride on Route 4. Those trees that are on that fence line are dying, are dead. And the other concern was, the trees to the west of that project, there's an hole there. They're going to crop those trees. If you crop a mature tree, I'm not an arborist, but I know, if you crop a mature tree, you may as well cut it, because it's going to kill it. So that's another thing that they're going to do. And that's basically what that letter of commitment said, that the solar development had agreed to some of our concerns, and they were going to do this. They're going to, and they're going to put it back to the way it is 20 years from now. I just, I'm not comfortable with the, the way that they approached my concerns. They didn't really give us a straight answer.
Other questions?
Well, I just want to follow up with Joe.
Sure.
I may, Mr. Chairman. Have they reneged on the promises they made that allows you to sign that letter?
Well, no, because right now, the project's on hold, because they don't think they can do it within their budget, because of the cost of materials, et cetera. Another comment that I'd like to make about that letter of commitment, so Ed Bowe took a letter, took a look at that letter, and he doesn't even think it's a legal document. This board should have been the one to sign that. Me signing that, they presented it to the Planning Commission to sign. We don't have any authority in town to sign things like that. The legislative body, which is the Select Board, should. I mean, this is something else, if you would like, I could have Ed get a letter up to you and tell you his position about that letter. I don't think that letter was appropriate. I feel like I did make a mistake by signing it, but I also thought that, as Mary Lee said, it really, they take it in out of our hands. They went over our head, made it in the public good, so that it was a 2.2 mag instead of the two 500 watt. So other than that, I mean, I guess that's, I don't, I just, I don't understand, what is the question? It's either you want to see a solar array on exit five or you don't. Those are the two things. It's not, well, so, you know, when you say you have concerns about that, what, what else is your concern? Would you like to see a solar array over there on exit five?
No, that's not the issue.
Well, I think it is the issue, Joe. I really do.
My question is, did your signed letter commit the town?
No.
And if you can, you know, if, if, I would appreciate seeing what Ed has to say about this.
Okay. I'll give that for you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, other questions? Dick?
No, Joe did a pretty good job asking already.
Joe, are you saying that the official position of the Planning Commission is in opposition to this?
Yes.
Is it unanimous, or it is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say that it has been for many years. I mean, I've been on the board for many years, but for a short time there, I felt that Janet Curry had more time, and she was doing a better job, and she's much more fluent with the computers than I am. So we had appointed her, and she was really adamant about not on exit five. And the ag land is another thing that we need to start protecting more of it. These developers are targeting open land, and part of the reason is because the state doesn't want them cutting trees. So I'm not going to sound like a broken record, because I already went over that.
So you are going to get us a letter from Ed?
I will.
Is it reasonable for the board to say it'll be on the next agenda, and at that point, we will act on it?
That's, I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay. That agreeable with you, Mary Lee?
Yes, but just for a matter, a note, I have been approached to have a solar farm put on my farm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else who wishes to address the board items not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Katie Culpo. I would like to address the board about the Sand Hill project, specifically the letter of support that the board sent to the DRB on July 21st, 2021. So I'll be brief. Chairman, I know you like brevity, so I typed my concerns about the letter. But I'll just briefly share a few things. I'll start by reading my intro, and then I'll just hit my key points. So admittedly, I knew little of town governance and structure prior to July 2021, but since receiving notification of a 99-unit PUD coming to Sand Hill Road, I've learned a lot in less than one year, and have sought technical assistance and counsel to fully understand how we have come to where we are today. I'm coming to the Select Board tonight as the town's chief elected body responsible for the overall management of town government, requesting that you reconsider a prior Select Board's letter submitted July 21st, 2021, to the Development Review Board in support of the Sand Hill project. There's too much missing or inconsistent information to know if this project is truly in the best interest of our entire town and community. From the July 21st, 2021 Select Board letter of support included in my statement tonight, points eight and nine state the following. Eight in summary says 50 to 70 new jobs, some of them high paying, and nine says that the town will receive $300,000 in municipal tax revenue. So this project has been promoted and supported by town officials and boards as affordable senior living that's going to bring in lots of high-paying jobs, tax revenue.
Katie, excuse me.
Yeah.
Why slow down just a little bit?
No, but I feel like you're going to cut me off.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm not going to lie. Okay. So the project has been promoted. My three key points is the project's been promoted as affordable senior living, it's going to cut our taxes, and that's going to bring in lots of high-paying jobs. So what I've done in this letter is, we've done our own due diligence as concerned citizens to bring for you our own facts and figures and data and information. So I'll just hit the key points, and all the details are here. And my last statement here was, I've not, I will not read verbatim, although I'm truly trying not to, as there is much detail here, and I've sourced where each item comes from, I have also directly aligned our concerns with the Castleton Town Plan language. Again, much of this is not my area of expertise, admittedly, and I welcome any factual corrections from the Select Board on anything that you see in this letter. I think we need facts and transparency and, and what this can or cannot do for our town. So affordable senior housing is my first point. The definition of affordable senior housing from the Castleton Town Plan, in summary, says 30 to 35% of a household's income. While Hail and Hale developers, and the developer Brad Dashwitz, have not provided costs or income guidelines for, for our Castleton facility yet, the sister facility in Berlin does have rates posted online. It's private pay, and it has minimum income guidelines. The Chestnut Place site says these are the costs, starting at costs. And in my conversation with Zach after the DRB meeting last week, the Castleton prices haven't been set, and they may be set higher, because Castleton market value prices are higher. And then on the next page, using that formula of 30 to 35%, this converts to annual income as follows, to be able to afford to live in one of those houses, in one of those units. So from the Vermont Department of Taxes, adjusted gross income in 2020 was $57,000 per return file. If we use that formula of the higher end of 35%, that's 1670 a month, or 30% would be 1,400 a month. So the average Vermonter cannot afford to live in this proposed facility. So as far as affordable housing for our community, this project does not support the Castleton Plan's guidelines for affordable housing. Low and middle-income Vermonters can't afford to live here. In fact, our analysis raises the question of the need for expensive senior living, 99-unit PUD in Castleton or Rutland County. I'm also concerned, my next point on affordable housing, I'm also concerned that this project is not aligned with the ALMA gives Donchun Foundation's primary missions, addressing issue, quote, "issues affecting the elderly, particularly those middle-income elderly not served by other programs," end quote, "community preservation." I would actually challenge that this four-story, 99-unit expensive senior living facility is serving middle-income elderly student, residents. It's not. And the size and magnitude of the building is not community preservation. That's point number one. Point number two is increased school and municipal tax revenue. Is the, is the project's going to contribute to responsible economic growth that would enhance our tax base, lower the tax rate, and serve the town's purposes? Supporters of this project have promoted that it will, including this, your, this 2021 Select Board letter, but we haven't really seen a detailed financial analysis from the Select Board on what this, what this facility is going to bring in as compared to increased potential municipal costs. And the goal statement of our Castleton Plan is to maintain a sound fiscal balance for the town. Fiscal balance being money taken in doesn't exceed money that's going out. So if we look at school taxes alone, I reached out to Cheryl Scarsello at Slate Valley Union to get a breakdown of what this potential facility, the bottom line is Castleton taxpayers will save no money on their school tax payments. And I include, I'm not going to read it, but I included my email exchange with her and her response. The second important point as far as finances is municipal tax income. So municipal tax revenue versus cost is a serious consideration for the Select Board to support this project. And stated in our town plan, like many other municipalities in Rutland County, Castleton derives most of its revenue from the taxation of local property in order to support municipal services. So how exactly will this project impact municipal tax revenue? And the letter from the board last July used a $17 million construction cost value to estimate $300,000 tax revenue. If you take out the school tax and just figure the municipal tax, I made a chart of 17 million construction cost versus 7.5 million is what the current Berlin building is assessed at. And then I just broke down year one, how much that would be, because it's also five years until you see the full tax revenue income. So you can see that the five-year value for 17 million or the five-year value for 7.5 million, both numbers are significantly lower than the 300,000 projected in the 7/21/21 Select Board letter to the DRB supporting this project. I don't think those numbers have ever been corrected, or some of that factual information re-corrected to the DRB as they're making decisions. So the question remains, will the merger increase in municipal tax revenue from this privately-owned profit endeavor bring in more dollars than the increase it creates on municipal services and maintenance? It needs to be seriously considered and recalculated. Residents have brought these issues up numerous times, still no details or clarifications, cost of infrastructure and cost of maintenance, water, sewer, wastewater, runoff issues, roads, fire rescue, on and on. We still don't have a really clear breakdown of money in and money out on this project. My last point on this is, how about all those jobs? The senior living facility would create 50 to 70 new jobs, some of which would be high paying. This is not a high-skill nursing rehabilitation center, agreed that type of facility would bring in high-paying nursing and medical physicians. As proposed, the Sand Hill project is 50% independent living, 32% assisted, and an 18-bed memory care. This facility will not require multiple highly skilled LPN RNs to function daily. Currently, the sister Berlin facility is advertising to hire one, one LPN RN. Now, they may have already hired many others, I don't know, but that's one registered nurse. Cooks, resident assistants, dining servers, front desk conciers, and housekeepers. It is possible that people will relocate to Castleton for these high-paying hourly positions, but it is more likely that the proposed Sand Hill project will be hiring from the current workforce and hiring pool in Castleton and Rutland County. And this may pose a problem for the Sand Hill project developers. According to the 2018 Castleton Plan, which states, quote, "The ability to find qualified employees is constraining business growth across industry sectors. Employees have revealed that the availability of a trained workforce is limiting job growth. Skilled professionals set to retire are not easily replaced by the existing younger workforce." So the conclusion, the Sand Hill project is not bringing numerous high-paying jobs to the town of Castleton, and may in fact struggle to fill many of the employment positions they need to hire. I'm going to wrap it up, and I'm testing your patience. To wrap up, I hope the current Select Board members will seriously reconsider the Sand Hill project permit, while many Castleton residents agree there is a need for affordable senior housing, and that this plot of land would make a good fit for such housing, the project being proposed by Hale Resources and developer Brad Dashwitz, I may not be sounding sources, it's, it's just too much for our town, too much for the residential Sand Hill Road. Possibly the developers could propose a building in size and scope that fits within our town plan, rather than taking their Berlin building and plopping it in our town. The Select Board, from learning all my research, the Select Board is responsible for the fiscal management of our town. I'm asking the board to seriously reconsider the July 21st, 2021 letter of support submitted to the DRB for this project. Thank you for your time, your consideration.
Thank you, Katie.
I consider, I included the letter.
Any questions? None? None? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board item not on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm John Chorila. I live at 110 Suncrest Terrace, and I'd also like to address the Sand Hill project. Some of the things that I have in here are somewhat duplicative of what Katie just said, so I'm going to not re, I'm not going to repeat those things, but I will add a couple things.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And really, what I'd like to say is that I don't think that this, in the document I've given you, calls out numerous spots in the town plan where this development does not mesh with the language of the town plan. And so, you know, for example, you know, the, the town plan does state it has a housing goal, enable our aging citizens to remain within the community by providing different types of housing options and recommended programs that promote the development of commercial and private senior housing. Other than that, there's not a lot in there. It does not support high-end senior housing. In many ways, this, you know, 99-unit, four-story building, large parking lot out front opposes the Ca, the Castleton Plan. For example, in quotes, "fits the characteristics of existing development." Page nine, scenic and natural resources are among the town's primary assets. Policy four, preserve agricultural area, there is prime agricultural soil on that property. Preserve scenic and open spaces. Preserve the character of surrounding properties. I've offered many, many examples that show that, you know, this, you know, this building as it's, you know, as it's designed, just does not meet our town plan.
I think where you want to take that is the Development Review Board. Your comments?
I agree, I agree, and we will, but I also know that you all have a lot of weight in determining what goes on in this town and, you know, how it goes forward.
Are you, you have more comments, or sir, is that it?
Yes. Just would like to note that, you know, in your letter, supporting this project on July 21, 2021, you stated that Castleton gifted this land for the express purpose of economic development. And I've read through some of those documents, and I really don't think that's so. I believe there are many other uses that would have been allowed by that covenant that could have been better, that could have been better done. So that's all I really want to say about the project. I do want to say one other thing. About a year ago, I was in Mike's office talking about how I could help out in this community, and was trying to find a board maybe to and was trying to find a board maybe to get on. But unfortunately, my evening schedule didn't really allow me to take part in the meetings that I would have to take part in. I wanted to do something positive. I feel badly that the only thing I'm doing right now is kind of bringing probably what you all perceive as negative energy towards this project here. I feel bad about that, but I really feel that it's necessary in this case because I feel very strongly about this project. I appreciate the things you guys do. I appreciate the sidewalk development and those types of things, the town center-type activity. I feel like that's where this kind of development belongs, mixed into that, not plunked up on the hill where we live or where anyone else might live up on a hill in any part of the town. So, you know, please don't feel that, I'm trying to be all negative, but I feel very strongly about this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other citizens wish to address the board items not on the agenda? Seeing none.
I would like to, if I could, Zach Hale.
Okay, Zach.
I would just like to point out that the town plan was actually the document that gave me the idea for this project. It actually started with, here's a piece of land that has an economic development covenant on the deed. And based on the town plan, what is it that I can put on this piece of land that is in line with it? And this is the idea that I came up with. I've been very vocal about it since two thousand and seventeen. And, yeah, I just, I, I, this is, that is, that's really what gave me this idea. So I'm not exactly sure how the town plan can go against it. I mean, especially in the housing part, the economic development part, kind of all around. So that's, I think, important information to consider, and I just wanted to share those few ideas with you.
Thank you, Zach. Anything else items not on the agenda? Dick?
Just a quick question. The document he gave you, is there more than one copy of that?
Yeah, I have a few extra copies.
Got some more?
Yep.
It would be nice if you could provide that to each member of the Select Board, please.
I also wanted to ask, if I sent in a document, does that have the town plan highlighted with all the parts of the town plan that gave me this idea? If I send that to Karen right now, can that be included with your guys' information as well?
Get those to Mike, please, Jim.
Okay, so I'm heading to send on that email right now so that she can check the time, and I am sending that in for your view as well.
You got that already. Get those, both of those to Jim. Get both of those to Mike. He gave you yours already.
Okay.
I want one for the minutes, too.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak at my good.
Regarding? Well, be very brief, sir. We have a full agenda. We've heard from two people. If you could be brief, we'd appreciate it.
I will. I'm Wayne Pickett. I'm on Sand Hill. Just wanted to ask the Select Board reconsider the support of the Sand Hill Project or at minimum take the time to assess if the Castleton population is truly in favor of this plan. The support, for the support of a four-story, ninety-nine PUD on Sand Hill Road. While many residents do support the concept and feel that there is a need, upon seeing the size of the project, many of them are shocked and unprepared for the fact that that's there. There's no other buildings within the town, other than on the campus, that meet that size or even come close to it. I believe that the surprise was most likely the result of the global pandemic of January twenty-twenty. Many people were in lockdown and were not allowed to go out. Budding Sand Hill Road property owners were first notified of this project by receiving a letter in the mail dated July twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-one from Jonas Rosenthal, discussing the Development Review Board and the planning and development permanent application for the unit. And the meeting was set on August seventeen, twenty-twenty-first was the first notification of project the residents of Sand Hill had and the first opportunity for residents to raise any concerns about the project. Further, causing a problem with transparency during a pandemic, the incomplete and somewhat missing town documents and minutes, and the fact that existing minutes often do not reflect actions taken for the discussions. From the public records, it's hard to tell if the project is in the best interest of the residents, and we expect that, we would ask the Select Board to take a look at that. In ten-five-twenty-one email, Town Manager Mike Jones reminded VRB member that they are responsible for the entire community, not just the Sand Hill residents, road residents who are opposed to this PUD. I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board to do the same. While you believe you are representing the town's best interests in changing and amending the town zoning ordinance to allow for the PUD with few restrictions, even allowing for a waiver process to give the DRB maximum flexibility, but are you really sure that this is what the entire community wants? How confident are you that these changes are supported by the entire community? You held four hearings, all during pandemic lockdowns, two Planning Commission hearings and two Select Board hearings, and no visitors or members of the public attended. Charlie Brown attended a Select Board meeting versus the Planning Commission hearing and was not allowed to speak on the proposed changes at that time, being told to attend the Planning Commission meeting. Unfortunately, he contracted COVID and was not able to attend the Planning meeting. So we are asking you to follow your own guidance and advice by asking the community if they actually support the zoning changes that now include planned unit development, standards of planned residential development, PRD standards, both new additions to the town zoning ordinance document. As per Planning Commission meeting minutes twelve, eight, twenty-twenty, both additions were a result of the purchases and sale agreement between Hale and Hale and the town of Castleton. I'm requesting the Select Board assess town support of these zoning ordinance changes through a mail or email survey to the community members at large or perhaps ask Castleton University to see if they would be willing to do a poll of the community and see if the assumptions about community support are in fact true. And if they're not true, and you learn that the community does not support the PUDs and PRDs as part of the zoning ordinance, what will you do to rectify this?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If you have just one copy?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring one. Can I email a copy to you?
Sure. Email it to Mike. How's that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if that will hopefully move on. Ethan Allen, Monument Committee. Christian Doran. This should be controversial, Christian.
My name is Christian Doran. I'm a resident of Castleton, and I'm the lead organizer for the Ethan Allen Project. And we have a four-minute video, real quick, just to kind of run through what the project is about and what our vision is for this.
Thanks, Christian. We're working on it, Christian.
Hi, my name is Christian Doran, and I'm here on the steps of the Federated Church here in Castleton, Vermont. And I'd like to present to you an idea, a proposal. And that is to rejuvenate and to restore what is already here in historic downtown Castleton, namely, the site of the meeting of Green Mountain Boys, including the famous Ethan Allen and Benedict Arnold. From the steps of the Federated Church, just across the driveway is the stone marker commemorating the meeting of Ethan Allen and Benedict Arnold on May ninth, seventeen seventy-five. The plaque reads, marking the meeting place of Ethan Allen and Benedict Arnold on their historic march to Fort Ticonderoga, May ninth, seventeen seventy-five. The stone placard was dedicated in nineteen forty-one. It was Vermont sesquicentennial. Behind the marker are two trees, which will need to be cut back and/or removed from the site. The benches that are here now have paint that is chipping, and they are not solidly grounded in the cement. This entire space has a lot of potential and could be a space like a park. The other war memorials from down in front of the library could be moved here. And new marble benches would be nice, something to consider for the future. The Ethan Allen Committee began about two months ago. Myself, I went to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the capture and rescue of Remember Baker, who was a Green Mountain Boy who lived in East Arlington, Vermont. And after attending that, I decided to do some deeper history into Castleton and what were the things that were coming up that had to do with a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary for our local history. And sure enough, in May of two thousand and twenty-five, we will have the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the meeting of Benedict Arnold and Ethan Allen. Our committee consists of five members, and so far, we've decided to put a statue on top of the stone that's already here instead of making an entire new monument. The statue would be made out of bronze, and we're still looking for an artist at the moment. This project is important because it brings about a connection in the community between the university, the historical society, the town of Castleton, our committee, and many different members in the town. Many different people in the town. And it's very important because it highlights not only our local history and rejuvenating our local history for people to learn about, but also the founding of Vermont and how that came about. And so all of this is very, very important, and I think our proposal is important not only for Castleton but for Vermont history as well. And that's the video there. So if you would like to get involved with this, we are meeting this Thursday at five-thirty at the Castleton University Library. And you can also add us on Facebook for updates. Just to quickly go through this, who we are. We're just a group of people that live in the Fairhaven, Castleton area. We would like to see a statue of Ethan Allen erected on the current monument area in downtown Castleton. And we would like to be in charge of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary ceremony on that day, May ninth of two thousand and twenty-five. So this idea came about because of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Remember Baker, which I attended. Who was Ethan Allen? He was the leader of the Green Mountain Boys' capture of Fort Ticonderoga. This project will bring together many people, historical society and so forth. Again, the committee meets this Thursday at five-thirty at the Castleton University Library. We are still in the process of getting like a bank account set up, maybe a 501(c) nonprofit in order to accept donations and so forth. And we're definitely open to more ideas and so forth. So I open it up for discussions, and that's kind of where we're at, so.
Questions for Christian?
Yes, is this going to be completely paid by donations or you asking the town as well?
At this point, we will be financing the statue through donations. So either through a mailer or through, we'll post something online saying if you could donate to this cause. So far, we do have some donations coming in. We're not accepting them yet as we don't have the bank account set up. But I feel as right now that we can kind of finance ourselves as long as the town is on board with the statue idea.
Thank you.
Other question. Joe?
Yeah, Christian, I don't think we've ever met, have we?
I don't think so, no.
You wouldn't know then that I have a strong interest in town history. I worked at the college for thirty-two years, and through virtually all that time, including into retirement, which I started ten years ago, I gave walking tours of the town to new students, to parents of new students, to alumni, et cetera. I probably gave, I don't know, a couple hundred walking tours. Maybe that's a little high, a hundred fifty or something like that. And I stopped at that rock in my early days and told the tale of the meeting between Ethan Allen and Benedict Arnold. And I dressed it up a little bit, describing how the meeting ended in Remington Tavern with Ethan Allen storming out with his men and with Benedict Arnold bringing up the rear. But somewhere along there, I read a book by a Vermont-based historian by the name of James Lowen, title of which is Lies My Teachers Told Me. And it focuses on dozens of monuments and plaques around the country that are in error. And that prompted me to dig a little deeper about that fabled meeting. And long story short, I'm not sure that the evidence supports that that meeting occurred in Castleton. There are some people who believe it took place in Shoreham. Some people aren't sure it ever took place in any single location. I've, I don't want to put his name on the air, but I think you have access to my email address. I'll send you the name of a well-published Vermont historian who told me that he did not believe that meeting took place. I would love for Castleton to celebrate that meeting if it took place here, but I think we shouldn't add another plaque to the Lies My Teachers Told Me if it didn't.
Sure. And we have ample evidence that it did happen there and that the Green Mountain Boys were there as a muster point the night before Ticonderoga.
I'd be equally interested in getting that from you.
Absolutely. Great. So we do invite you to our next meeting if you would like to be there, and we can definitely discuss this.
Sure.
So, great.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Mike?
Can I address?
Pardon? Address the board?
Sure.
So probably less than a year ago, I did ask the Board whether or not they would approve removing the road that goes around the backside of that. And the Board approved it, and the adjacent landowner was John Ramlin. He still supports it. So I still want our plans to remove that road and turn that into a little park with rehabbing the benches or getting new benches. So there is a plan anyway, because it is kind of embarrassing to look at the shape it's in. And I talked to the tree warden, and those trees, he wants to remove them and place different trees in there anyway. So regardless of what happens, we still have a plan to move that forward to make it a little park area.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for the information. Anything else on this item? Seeing none. Move on. Grandpa's Knob Community Wind Project update. Sam Carlson. Sorry you're a little late, Sam.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. I'm happy to go into as much detail as you're interested in terms of an overall project update as to where we are in the project engineering and as we approach the permitting process. The specific purpose of my visit tonight is to follow-
I cannot hear him.
It's up here. That's the microphone, if you want to get closer to that.
Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Sam Carlson, manager for Community Relations for Grandpa's Knob Community Wind Project, which is a proposed one-point-five-megawatt turbine to be placed up on Grandpa's Knob, adjacent to the existing communications tower. I'm happy to go into a full project update. I know you guys have a lot on your table, and so I'll only, if you want me to go in there, I'll go there. The specific purpose of my meeting tonight is to follow up on a discussion I think we had at a Select Board meeting last fall. And I think also with Joe, the Planning Commission, when we first talked about Grandpa's Knob Community Wind Project, which was the possibility of several members of the Select Board and maybe of the Planning Commission doing a site visit to go up onto the knob to see exactly where the proposed turbine tower would go and what the area of disturbance, if you will, would be, what its location would be relative to the existing communications tower, the condition of the road, the power line, et cetera. That was an interest that was expressed last fall. Winter was coming. The road was becoming impassable. And I said, let's come back in the spring. The road is, I was up on the knob last week. The road is, I, I was up on the knob last week. Uh, we can get up there. If there's an interest from either any members of the select board or the planning commission to go up and visit the site, we're happy to do that. I'll stop there.
Joe, do you think the planning commission would be interested in visiting the site?
Yeah.
Okay. Members of the board, are you interested in visiting the site, the site visit?
I would like to.
Yes.
Probably. Yes, probably. Okay.
I'll go with probably.
Pardon?
I'll go with probably.
You'll go with probably? Okay, all right. Uh, then we'll get back to you, Sam, on it. How's that?
Okay, that's great. Um, I'll just throw out there the, the issue obviously of the open meeting law, how many members can go and the landowner is concerned that we not have huge numbers. There are sensitive, rare, threatened, endangered plants up there that we have to be careful about. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm happy to work with Mike on trying to arrange a visit that doesn't violate any meeting laws or, or, but also make sure you guys get all the information that, that you need.
Okay, thank you.
Make it two members. Make it two members.
Yeah, any two members can go and it's not considered a quorum. Okay? All righty, we'll move on. Chief, do you have a lengthy report tonight?
Oh, absolutely. They're right, busting my nap time right now. Uh, you all got a copy of the, um, report, correct?
Mm-hmm. We do.
Any questions on the calls for service? I don't see any major, uh, although our theft complaints were down in April. Um, as, as we pointed out in the narrative on the rear. Nothing on that? What about the criminal arrests? Anything just jump out at you down a little bit in April? Nothing going there and... And let's go to traffic violations. Stayed about the same, little bit lower, but as the weather's gotten better, you'll see a difference in May. They did do a, uh, there is a, this is a week of highway safety. Um, ticketing going in, it's a campaign that's going on right now. So you probably saw a bunch of stops on Main Street and moved forward today. And several officers involved in that. No questions on that. Uh, calls of service, you know, it pretty much stays the same. It hasn't really changed a whole lot from what we went to the university to the backup provided by Castleton to other agencies. So that hasn't really changed. That's been pretty consistent. So we went into kind of a proactive enforcement piece on the narrative piece that we put together. Um, you know, like, uh, was mentioned on the violations. Really, April wasn't, uh, wasn't a lot of violations considering toward graduation. Actually, I made a comment that I had four of off-campus residents, student residents meet with me and what the do's and don'ts of putting a party and stuff like that. So I thought that went very well. Uh, it's a good relation, um, that we built to have that trust. And as you down farther, uh, we conducted a lot of property checks in April because, uh, people like to get out of here in April. Uh, directed patrols, okay, as, as the warm weather shows up. We're, we're already see, we're already getting calls on roads. My newest one is Johnson Spooner. So I talked to a couple residents there that came to me that want a little more enforcement out there. And obviously in the summertime, we kind of focus on Creek Road, Green Dump because we've had issues, especially during COVID, during that period out there, got out of control. And one of the things I do wanna make a note of, as I mentioned prior to the start of the meeting, was that, uh, we had seven, we had seven cars that were not broken into, but that were unlocked and keys and valuables were left in. And that happened this probably Saturday, no, probably Sunday night, actually. It probably happened cause they reported this morning. So I put a message out to the people that are listening and that you would put the word out, as I'm gonna put on my website, that, you know, the days are gone of not locking your, uh, of, of not locking your vehicle and keeping stuff in there. It's disheartening to see it throughout the county. People have actually guns taken out of their cars that are unlocked. All sorts of things. And it's not just happening in this town, it's happened throughout Rutland. Pittsford was hit on Monday. I think, uh, the chief up there had like eight calls up there. I know Rutland Town's been hit. Alderman's was hit, broke into last night. So, I mean, they'll pick up as the warm weather. So you have to be a little more diligent in your security of your vehicles and so on.
Questions for the chief?
Just one, where geographically, where were the most of the car problems? For lack of a better term?
Well, last night it was Main Street and South Street. So most of your thefts are gonna be, you know, accessible. They haven't hit really the, the back areas like going up, whether it's Belgo or Indian Point. But I would imagine when most of these camps open up, I, I, that happens every year. We're gonna get some calls that the houses were broken into. They get there and stuff may be missed. Hopefully not.
Okay, any other, Joe?
Yeah, chief, uh, you, on your proactive enforcement, uh, paragraph, you list nine residences, each of which have had, uh, two to four violations. How many different landlords own those nine properties?
Well, they're all listed right here. I can tell you that, uh...
I don't want you to name names.
No, no, but there's probably three. Three actually that own most of these right here.
Yeah. Have we made any efforts to communicate with the landlords about these?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have made that. But this year, I'm telling you, it's lower than average. Like these complaints, these violations is lower than the average was in prior years. But yes, I try to make contact with them all and touch base with them.
I do.
Any other questions for the chief? Is there a question, Mike?
If the board members don't.
Oh, okay. Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Do or you don't?
I do.
You don't? He has a question for you.
So the Memorial Day Parade is scheduled for the Saturday, the 28th?
Correct. So yes, that's a thing to remind me of. So there is gonna be Memorial Day Parade at 10 o'clock starting down by the rail trail entrance, like we start most of the parades. I will make sure that they start on the southern side of the pull-off and out front of the, uh, the train depot, the interact station. And, uh, the Legion put it on, they kind of put it together in the last 10 days cause we really didn't know what was going on. I heard rumors, Mike had called me. So the Boston Crusaders are supposed to be a part of it. They will start at 10, with the lineup begins at 9. They'll come down to do their normal memorial for the library. And then they're gonna come up through the intersection North and South Street and then go up South Street and dissipate that way.
The other thing was the coin, we're gonna, coin drop season? And they're supposed to coordinate with you ahead of time to make sure the location and?
I hadn't heard from anybody about coming. They usually like to put them when we have these events. Okay, all right.
Hey, thank you, Peter. Moving on, the coin drop request. Castle Lions Club, June 25th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we allow the Lions Club on June 25th, 2022, hold a coin draw.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there a discussion?
We've only authorized two so far, is that correct? Who authorized three?
Three so far.
Four?
Correct. And then eighth grade was the last one. And there's a note on that one there.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. The other one is the Castle in eighth grade would like to reserve the option for a coin drop as they have always done in the past. However, due to the eighth grade being moved to the high school, they do not yet have a contact person. Therefore, please grant the ability for them to propose a date to the board for approval once the contact is done completed. What's your pleasure?
Once again, I'll ask the question, have we, have we already hit the limit?
No, no, they're one of the limits cause they're, they're one of, one of the ones that's in the coin drop policy that they get one every year. They just haven't given a date yet. So the date they do propose may be in conflict with something you've already awarded. So they're gonna be made aware of the dates that have already been chosen.
Sure.
Anything else on this?
Well, I, I would make a motion that we, uh, preliminarily, no, let me remove that, that we approve the request of Castleton eighth grade for a coin drop on an unspecified date that does not conflict with other, uh, coin drops that have already been approved.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Tim Gilbert?
Just a point of order. I wanted to just point out that we have gained five minutes on the agenda somehow in the last topic. Just to-
We are, we are working diligently on it, Joe.
Just set back the clock.
I know, I know that too. Okay, I'm sure we all do. Uh, Tim Gilbert, Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Have the Rutland County Solid Waste District annual report? I got four copies. They're kind of, I didn't know if everyone wanted their own. If you do want your own, uh, we can certainly-
Let's make copies.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave these with Mike.
Okay. If we want an extra, we'll, we'll let you know, Tim. How's that?
Our trash district, uh, I think we're doing okay right now. Uh, we're, we should hear from our auditors, uh, coming up. Uh, I believe that there'll be a, uh, let's see, we don't like to call it a surplus, we like to call it, uh, revenue in excess of expenses. Uh, and it is, uh, the intent of, of few people that the towns get some of that back. Uh, unfortunately, I know you've heard the idea that, uh, necessity is the mother of invention. But, uh, I think that sometimes, uh, surplus is the mother of necessity. And, uh, when we have a, a surplus, sometimes there seems to be a necessity for it in other places. And, uh, I will attempt to mitigate that a little bit. Uh, and that I think, uh, there are things that we have coming up, but we can plan for them. Uh, for instance, we have, uh, the water runoff, which you're probably familiar with, with our own parking areas and so on. And it looks like about a $400,000 bill spread over five years. Uh, so we are, uh, trying to plan for that, but we may need to use some of that. In the past, we've also not necessarily budgeted for equipment replacement. And, uh, now we're, we're trying to do that. Uh, but we do have a, a couple of needs that are coming up. So, uh, I'm not exactly sure where all the, the funds will come from, from those things, but I suspect probably some of it from that surplus. Uh, right now, uh, we find some costs are going up due to diesel fuel, uh, which I'm sure the towns are well aware of. Um, but it seems that, uh, revenues are, are holding pretty well and that as things pick up, there's more, more trash, more cost, but also, uh, more income. Uh, we just, uh, are, are not exactly sure what we call the title of it, but it's a, uh, basically the assistant manager's position has, uh, just been filled. Uh, we lost our assistant manager. Went on to a different job. Uh, we also had some turnover in the hazardous waste. Uh, so our hazardous waste has not been open, uh, uh, just drop in, it's been open by appointment, uh, because we've been shorthanded. So we need to kind of make sure someone's there to cover the hazardous waste. Uh, but that is open to Castle and residents, uh, or people that hold, not necessarily just Castle and residents, but people that hold our town transfer station permits. Uh, it's open, uh, basically from 7:00 to 3:00, uh, for appointments. And, uh, it's our hope to get that back open on a, just a drop-in basis. We do a hazardous, uh, waste pickup in town. Uh, I think the last one might've been an hour shorter than, uh, they had been in the past. And we've tried to restore that hour back in there. It was not, uh, a popular thing. But again, uh, we've been shorthanded in the, uh, that department. And we had to go through some training with, uh, new personnel and so on. So that is ongoing. Uh, and I think there's been another turnover in the office that their colonel was trying to fill. So, um, but basically things are going okay.
Okay, any questions for Tim?
Yes.
Dick?
Um, what if any, uh, well, let me restart over. The last hazardous waste collection that occurred in Castleton, there was, um, quite a few, I guess you'd call them patrons, that were turned away and they were unable to get, um, get, get rid of their hazardous waste, whatever it was. I personally got there at 9:18 and was in line for almost an hour. And at 9:52, I was told that I wouldn't be taken care of. And then during that space of, uh, 34 minutes, a total of four vehicles were serviced. So that's about an average of nine minutes per vehicle. And there were vehicles arriving at 9:30 and quarter to 10 and even 10 o'clock that were not taken care of. So my question to not just you, but to the, the board in general, is what if anything are they doing to rectify that and to be able to expedite taking care of, um, patrons? Because that, in my opinion, was, it needs a tune-up.
I would agree with that. Uh, what we've done is, uh, tried to extend the time. Uh, and as I said, we're training personnel now. Uh, we were short one person. Uh, we have, uh, someone's taken that job, but they had to go through some training and so on. So, uh, we hope to have a, a more full staff in the household hazardous waste. And as far as the efficiency of nine minutes per vehicle, I, I can't really address that. Uh, but I would say that if people have, uh, household hazardous waste that they wanna get rid of and they don't wanna wait, uh, just make an appointment. Uh, and I know that it's, you gotta drive it over Rutland, but many people go over there anyways. Uh, the Gleason Road is open and you can make an appointment and it's all yours. Drop in, drop it off and go away.
Well, that's all well and good, Tim, but we need to, you need the board-
I understand.
Needs to come up with a way to expedite that process because I think it's a reasonable expectation if you show up an hour before the event is scheduled to close that you would be taken care of.
I would agree with that.
And that, there was people in line, about six or eight vehicles in front of me in an average of nine minutes per vehicle. They were there well before 9:00. And to be turned away after being in line for over an hour is not acceptable.
I would agree with that 100%. And that was addressed to the manager. And, uh, we are working on it and I will get back to you.
Yeah, I'm not trying to throw stones or anything, but it just needs to be-
Needs a tune-up, that's all.
I think, you know, one or two more people, maybe some public education or something to expedite the process. Because I can recall one time going over there several years ago to our transfer station. And it was two or three vehicles ahead of me and they were, it was, it was a pretty quick process. And, you know, I was at the truck getting rid of whatever I had for a total of maybe two or three minutes. So how that morphed from two or three minutes to nine minutes is-
I can't answer that, Dick. I, I do know that, uh, the regulations probably haven't gotten, uh, less restrictive in those, uh, past few years and that there's more things now that need to go through that process than previously. Uh, and that may be part of it, but I will, uh, address that. Our, uh, next meeting is actually not until the 23rd of June. Our, our manager is, uh, away right now. I think maybe on hunting day or something or going to be. Uh, so, uh, I will address that and I'll come back to the board.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Joe, you have any questions for Tim? Mary Lee, any questions for Tim?
No.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, isn't our next one before that meeting? I thought it was early June when our next hazardous waste was here in Castle.
It's the 18th. Can I, can I address? I, I have the answer that he was looking for. Go ahead. So to the board, um, the next, it's, uh, June 18th. Um, they've expanded the times from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And we also provided the form and attached it to the town's website. That was a holdup is, if you come with a form filled out ahead of time, that will speed up the process. Um, but they are, we, we posted it out there and we're gonna make a post on social media letting people know it's out there on the website, um, to help speed it up. But it's 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. on the 18th of June and the 3rd of September.
Okay.
Hopefully that will, I mean, we have been working on that. I also should add in that, uh, any holder of a Castleton, uh, transfer station permit can get one from the Rutland County Solid Waste District for free. Uh, you just need to provide your vehicle information and the number from the, uh, transfer station permit here in Castleton. And, uh, that is open, uh, six days a week.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim, can you sign the signing sheet, too, please?
Go ahead.
Okay, moving on. CVS School Update, Mary Lee and Joe Mark. Who's first?
Oh, Joe.
Okay, Mary Lee.
Well, we, uh, we, we've had.
Joe.
Has it been four meetings, Mary Lee, I think, that we've had? We had our last meeting.
Yes. Meeting on Thursday night. It was well-attended. It was held at the village school, and, uh, starting half an hour before the meeting, people were able to show up and, uh, give themselves a tour. I think a lot of people found that helpful. We had something in excess of thirty, uh, individuals attend the meeting. And I sent you all a copy of the draft minutes. I hope you had a chance to review that. It was a pretty, uh, we attempted to make those a fairly thorough summary of, uh, what people asked and said. Uh, essentially, there are, I'd say, four, um, groups that have expressed an interest in using the facility or part of it. A, um, woman by the name of Tiersa Brannick, who was, uh, mentioned in the minutes of one of our last meetings, runs two daycare centers in the area and would be interested in consolidating them at the, uh, village school. She would not need the whole facility, but probably eight classrooms. Uh, she, at the last meeting, expressed an interest in buying the school. The, um, rep department has a strong interest in using it, both, uh, as a, a, a home for the department and for its director when that person is hired, but also for programming, uh, in the gym and elsewhere. Uh, there is, uh, we have had representatives of the Boys and Girls Club of Rutland County attend most of, if not all of our meetings, and they would be interested in holding their after-school programs there, uh, from after school until six thirty P.M. And finally, there is a, a, a group that has, uh, been advocating the use of the facility as a community center, which would include recreation, but include activities beyond, uh, what we normally think of as recreation. And I think during the last meeting, it, uh, it was starting to look like it might be possible for all of these interested groups to coexist within the facility. Uh, we haven't gotten there yet entirely, but that certainly is, uh, something we could hope for. Uh, one model would be for the town to sell the building to Tiersa Brannick, uh, on the condition that she would lease back portions of it to some of the other town groups, like, uh, recreation that want to be able to use that. Uh, except for, uh, Tiersa and, and her offer to purchase, uh, we haven't really had a lot of, um, proposals that carry, uh, revenue generation potential. There have been references to memberships, for example, for people who would use the gym for, uh, basketball and fitness centers perhaps. Uh, but, uh, it, it, so far, no one has put the numbers together that would cover what we anticipate are the operating costs. Um, we have another meeting coming up on June first, and, uh, I think we will probably hear some more on, on these various ideas. Um, and that's kind of the update I was prepared to provide. I also wanted to reference the memorandum of understanding that was in your packet. This is something that the, uh, ad hoc committee approved last Thursday night and is recommending to both the Castleton Select Board and the Hubbardton Select Board for, uh, approval for adoption. As I think you all know, uh, there's been what we call a historic understanding that the, the schools that the, uh, Castleton and Hubbardton communities have shared, uh, Castleton Elementary School as well as Castleton Village School have been shared with an understanding of an eighty-nine percent, eleven percent, uh, split, both for, uh, the value of those properties, if they were to be reverted to the communities, and also the financial obligation for those, the upkeep and support of those properties. Uh, that has never been codified as far as any of us can establish. But this document would do that and would also, uh, lay out a procedure for decision-making about how to use the property, how to buy the other town out of the owner, joint ownership, and, uh, how to make a decision about lease or sale. And I don't know whether, if people have had a chance to review this thoroughly, uh, I'd be prepared to make a motion that we adopt it. If you want more time to consider it, we could put that off till our next meeting. Mary Lee?
Mary Lee?
I look at this, uh, it could be a win-win situation for everybody around. It's getting together and trying to coordinate things. Um, I'm quite excited about it. Uh, I, I think there's a lot of things that can be done with the building, whi- which would benefit everyone. Um, just for Joe's sake, I'd like to ask that we have a official note taker. The poor man had writer's cramp the other day, and then three hours of writing up the notes after. So I'm proposing and asking the board to okay, um, official note taker.
Anything else, Mary Lee?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. Joe did a good job.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. So are, are you ready for a motion on, on the adoption of this?
Yes. I'm prepared to vote on it. I'm prepared, sure. Are you prepared to vote on the memorandum, Mary Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Motion?
I would like to move that the board, uh, adopt the memorandum of understanding between the towns of Castleton, Vermont and Hubbardton, Vermont, in regards to the future of the Castleton Village School building and property.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have two seconds. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we move on, Jim.
Pardon?
Yep. Before we move on, I should, think we should address the idea, or the, the concept of a recording secretary for this body.
Okay.
So the question I have is probably to the town manager is, would the budget support that? Is part one of the question.
If, I mean, how long are we talking? Five meetings, ten meetings, twenty meetings?
Where should we know?
I, I, I don't think any of us who joined this ad hoc committee were anticipating that it would be a very long process. Um, I, I, I would imagine, uh, we might have, uh, five meetings in our future. What do you think, Mary Lee?
I think we could do it in five, five, six, the most.
How's the budget, Mike? You checking it out now?
Okay. So, under legislating, you guys are $228 in the hole. So thanks for overspending that, but, um, no, it's, you can absorb it.
Pardon?
You can absorb it. If you're talking a couple, three hours per meeting for five meetings, you can absorb that.
Is that something that we have, is that something that, um, obviously we should approach Allison first?
Um, I did send an email today to Karen to ask Allison. I didn't wanna put her on the spot, 'cause she's.
I don't wanna put her on the spot either. I just wanted to make sure the budget could support it.
Yeah. So I haven't got a response back, but when Allison's ready, she'll let us know.
Anything else on the motion?
Well, I haven't made a motion.
Well, go ahead and make one.
I'll make a motion that, um, we authorize the town manager to retain a recording secretary for the ad hoc committee for the Castleton Village School.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion on it? Saying none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Grogi. Um, that's a perfect segue for my question. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the May nineteenth meeting. And my question is, has a process been established? Sounds like at least five more meetings, uh, were just established. Is there a timeframe? And, and more importantly, what is the criteria for how this decision will be made? What happens after June first? Thank you.
Any answers to that?
Joe?
I can, uh, take a piece of it. Um, I, I think, Mary, you've heard, uh, Tiersa talk about her timetable, uh, for planning, uh, her next year of, uh, childcare. She would like to, um, have a decision as to whether she can purchase this property, uh, before the start of the next school year. So, obviously, uh, that would be August or earlier for the boards, that includes the Castleton Board and the Hubbardton Board, to decide whether they want to sell the property to her.
Okay. That answer your question, Mary?
Well, not fully, but it's part of it. So you're letting this person determine the process? Her timeline is determining the term process for public input and decision-making?
Everyone who walks in with an offer to buy a building like this, uh, I think requires our attention.
I, I wasn't, with all due respect, saying it shouldn't require our attention. Just that I think it's.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Mary.
My comment, Mary Lee, was simply, um, all along, I've been asking for a clear process with a timeframe and a criteria, and it appears as though one proposal is driving that. That was my, with all due respect, my comment.
I think Joe mentioned that, and you can correct me, Joe, that anyone who came in with a proposal would be a possibility?
Right. I mean, we, uh, I, I did not mention this in my summary of our process, but I did provide a fair bit of detail in the minutes. Uh, we also heard from a commercial realtor, uh, about the marketability of the building and, uh, either as a sale or lease, uh, facility. And, um, essentially, he indicated that it would, could be up to a two-year timeframe for, uh, selling a building like this.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Uh, Katie?
Hi. I guess I've kind of echoed Mary as far as the process, and I'm hearing, at our town vote, our town voted that we wanted to purchase this building. And at our town vote, our town voted that we wanted a full-time recreation director. So I'm kind of feeling from our town, we got two supportive votes of wanting to have a centralized facility for town recreation. But now I'm feeling it's just kind of this isolated decision to sell the building. So I, I guess I'm kind of, I, I guess I'm having the same thought that I had for the Sand Hill project. Like, what's the process for really seeing, like, what do we want as a town for this building? So what would be the process to make a decision for what the town makes? And I get it, Joe, I'm reading this. Like, Rutland has a two million budget and five, no, two point five million and five hundred thousand is, and like, so I get it, you need a budget and a plan, but there's hardly any time to do that. Joe Bruno brought up at the other meeting, the town, the school has money that was paid. I feel like you need a little, right, didn't you bring up that we paid school taxes for supporting that building?
Yeah, that's on that building.
Town groups need a little more time to put together a budget or a plan or apply for a grant or a something to make this happen. Uh, it just seems like a big decision to just sell it, um, and give it away to the town. And they talked about economic development. I know my husband's gonna go to the last meeting and talk about AAU tournaments and camps and the university. I mean, I know certain coaches would love to rent facilities and use stuff. We haven't even had time to explore any of that and what economically that building could add to our community and what it could bring to our community.
Thank you, Katie.
I love the idea of the.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on. Uh, park and ride?
Would you love a hand up there, Jim?
Yes, Mary.
One last quick question. What is, uh, the asking price officially for that building? Has that been determined? The sale price?
Nope.
Nope.
We don't own it yet.
We don't own it.
Okay. I, I know there was an appraised value, and then if, it will be updated before, if, if the decision is.
Sure.
To be sold.
Certainly. Not only would the price be, but of course, the fact that, um, deferred maintenance would require a new roof, um, underground storage tanks would have to be removed, uh, possibility of asbestos in other parts of the building. Those are all something that I'm sure anyone who was interested in buying would wanna take into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
The appraised, uh, value of the building was $650,000, uh, roughly two years ago. Ray Alt, the commercial realtor who addressed, uh, the committee on Thursday night, said that over the last two years, commercial real estate has increased approximately ten to fifteen percent.
Okay. Thank you. The thought will move on. Um, park and ride lighting. Mike?
So I, just a follow-up to the last time we talked about this. I, I had Dan Gray take a look at the park and ride and see what it would cost to use the existing, um, solar lighting fixtures to, um, put up our own lights, and it was $6,500. And I, I came to the board saying before that the batteries alone were gonna be, like, thirty-six-hundred, um, and that's every five to seven years. And the board said, move forward with it, but I didn't have the, the cost of what Green Mountain Power was gonna charge us to, and put the pole in, run the lines. So I had, I have that now, which I provided in that email of, it's $2,889.60. Um, it's not budgeted, um, for either the sixty-five-hundred or for the thirty-two-hundred or thirty-six-hundred for the batteries. Um, so I'm at a, a point right now where, um, what I would recommend to the board is to wait until the end of the fiscal year to see if there's any unassigned general fund surplus to put toward that. 'Cause otherwise, we're waiting until next year, and even that budget doesn't support it. So, great, I guess, concept to get rid of those solar lights, 'cause they're just gonna be a, a thorn in our side for many years, but we don't, we didn't budget for our, you know, last year's budget didn't include this. So that, without adding it into future budgets, uh, we can wait and see what the general fund surp, unassigned surplus says at the end of the year, and you can make a decision before June thirtieth to use it or not.
Okay. Joe?
What happens to those solar panels?
Uh, I've asked that question to Sol, the, the company that, um, that we got the parts and pieces through, 'cause I looked through the, the agreement to see if it had any kind of clause that we had to maintain them for perpetuity. And there is nothing. It just says that we'll maintain them, um, to the standards that, uh, for, for the manufacturer's standards, but it doesn't say that we can't get rid of them. So I've asked that question. There's a, uh, the grant came through the state of Vermont, a Vtrans grant, so I've reached out. Uh, the person that's on the paper, it doesn't work there anymore, so I'm navigating my way through to talk to the right person. But, um, if they say that we don't have to, we can just remove them, um, that I'll come back to the board and let you know what, what they say. But, um, my gut feeling is that they're gonna tell us, they're yours, do what you need to do with them.
Any other questions on that? So you just want us to wait until you see what happens?
Yeah. Funding-wise, I'm just letting you know there's no funding for it, and I'm just waiting for an answer whether or not we can legally get rid of them. Um, and you have a hand, there's a hand up, too, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the Zoom. I'm not sure if it's, it's Jeff Schroeder. Um, I'm not sure if it's pertaining to this or not, but.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, Jim.
According to the, this doesn't really have to do with the lighting, but on cleanup day, uh, we took two, four bags of garbage out of that park and ride with numerous syringes and bags of diapers. I don't know whether lighting is gonna help that or something
I, I talked to Pat about this. Uh, we've put garbage cans down with it before, and it becomes, everybody's, wants to dump their household trash in it anyway. Um, but we do have some signs coming and some surveillance cameras. Um, and once we get the lighting down there, that will certainly help. But that's, that's the, I guess, passive. But that's, that's the, I guess, passive way to address somebody throwing stuff out of their car into the park and ride, the lawn.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Obviously, from what I hear, we don't have to take any action. It's just for information. Thanks, Mike.
Just a comment, Jim.
Sure.
That's not the only unofficial disposal area in town. The dip by my house, I think there was five or six bags that my wife and one of the other neighbors filled up there, including bags of diapers and other household trash.
It's hard to fix irresponsibility when you don't know, they're smart enough to take anything with their name on it out of the garbage.
Yeah. And there was also a substantial quantity of adult beverage containers that were thrown over the bank there.
Imagine that. They didn't want the, they didn't want the return...
Economic stimulus plan.
Pardon?
It was an economic stimulus plan.
Yes. Okay.
Sand Hill Road even had a calculator.
Okay. Anything else on this? If not, we'll move on to the manager's report.
As usual, the, the stuff highlighted in yellow is kind of the stuff that's newest on there. On page one, the sidewalk project from Castle and Corners to Parsons Hills. They've started the surveying this week. Mark Corcel is the surveyor for that project. He's supposed to start this week. He got rained out last week. And 8th of June is the pedestrian, the bike and pedestrian grant is due. So my concern was, oh, hold on. I misspoke. Number one is the pedestrian accessibility in the Village area. That's the one that has the grant is due on the 8th. So I'm waiting for the final report from Fussin' O'Neill to have that data to be able to put into this grant application. And we were supposed to have it last Friday, and we still don't have it. So Dan, I talked to Dan Minat, and he, he's pushing, he knows the urgency of it all. So hopefully this week I've, I've got it because 8th of June is creeping up pretty fast. And I don't believe the select board has made any kind of determination yet on the funding for that. And it's not, this isn't the form to do that. But you're aware, I think I've made it aware a couple of times, that our sidewalk reserve money is expended. So anything, that's our 20% cost share for this project is not in a budget at this point. Any questions on that one? I'm on page two, B, under that. That's the Parsons Hill one. They started this week. Hopefully, Mark will get that done. And that will allow Fussin' O'Neill to do the, the plans, project plans, so that we can get it put out to bid. That's the one that's 50% cost share. That we have in the budget, but that's the one that depletes it.
Do we have any feelings about whether that'll be able to be built this year or not?
After talking with two contractors, today, as recently as today, when I, the same guy that's doing the Pelletier Dam project, we got to get on it fast because if anything, it will be at the end of the construction season.
That's what I expected here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Waiting, I'm on C, on page number two, C, Staso Road Storm Otter Scoping Study. They want to present to the select board the second regularly scheduled meeting in June on their findings. And if you recall, this is also the scoping study that will hopefully lead us to the Salt and Sand Shed, the approval for a grant for the Salt and Sand Shed. So in the second meeting in June, expect that we'll have something to discuss about that project. I'm on page three, D, Grants and Aid Project. So Barker Hill was, their culvert was replaced. So that completes the segments that we're out of tolerance with are now completed. And there's actually a guy, if you see a guy riding around on a bicycle looking at culverts in town, they're doing a culvert inventory, and he's riding the town, the whole town on a bicycle doing this culvert inventory. So good for him. But it's just an update they have to do every once in a while, so. But I was, I was told that it's, he is not, nothing nefarious is happening. He's just doing his job. Under E on that page, on Three Better Roads Grant, I explained in a previous report that we were awarded two Better Roads Grants. One, Class B, which is the culverts, and that was for Eaton Hill West. And a Class D Large Structures Grant for South Street Trestle. So now that we've been awarded the Class Two, V-Trans Class Two Structures Grant and the Class D Better Roads Grant, we can't have both. So we're, the smaller one of the two is the Class D Structures Grant. So we got to turn that back to V-Trans.
You said Class B?
Delta. The Class D is the structures one. And that, I put the dollar figure in there. $56,000 is the town share for the Class D Delta, a large structure. That's the one we have to turn back. The Class B Bravo is for Eaton Hill West, and that one's good. We have that one. But the Class Two V-Trans Structures Grant is much more money, and that, that will address the South Street Trestle project. Transfer Station, this is, it starts on page four and bleeds over into page five. So the action needed parts on page five. Still don't have a quote for pouring concrete walls at the transfer station versus the block walls now. It's, I imagine it's going to be expensive, but I want to be able to come back to the board. And those, if you've been to the transfer station recently, you'll notice the block walls that we just reset two years ago are starting to bow out already. And we just have that nice pad put in down there, and it's just a shame that the stuff is not holding. So my, my recommendation is to pour the concrete walls. I talked to Joe Rice, the operator. Actually, Bob Spalding came up and he talked to me about it. That, that layout that's there now, they're, they like the layout. So if we permanently put those poured concrete walls in there, it should serve us for, till, till I'm, I'll be pushing up daisies probably, but so...
Decades.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll, once I can get a quote, I will provide that to the select board. Solar projects, just, this is not on there, but just as of today, the invoice for the first payment, the $10,000 payment, was submitted. So if you recall, we, this, this will go to pay off the land that we, the town purchased from Hattica's for that first five years, six years. And then, once that's paid off, then the money will be freed up to do other things. But it'll at least pay off the, the purchase price of that property. I'm on page six, number four, Sewer Plant. Well, I guess that's just, I don't know why I highlighted that. You already know all that stuff. I, I know, I broke down the, the amount of money that 40% subsidy brings in, in the $250,000. So it's $844,520 the town will receive from that subsidy in addition to the $250,000 from the Pollution Control Grant. So I mean, the total loan funding required is $1,466,145 out of that $2.5 million bond capacity. So that just was an update. Breaks it down a little bit. Number six, Highway Department, at the bottom of the page, FEMA, the trestle. So now that we've got money to do this, they threw in a little bit of a wrinkle. They being V-Trans Rail Bridge Management. They want plans for this, showing that whatever we do is not going to undermine or cause a problem for the trestle structure. So I've, I've reached out to Chris, Four Acre, asking him to get in contact with Erin Charbonneau from the V-Trans Rail Management. She's the engineer. And when they were on site last time, we were supposed to meet them there, they never called us. They went there, but we didn't get a chance to express our concerns. So we asked for them to come back so we can talk to them about what we plan on doing and how that may impact the, the structure itself. And I don't think we can do that until we dig it, expose of it, and so we can look at the footings below that, that trestle. Because we're digging right, we're digging right next to it.
So we have a catch 22 here. We can't dig without stamped drawings, and we can't get stamped drawings without digging? Does that pretty much sum it up?
Yeah. And they're, well, the digging part's what I'm saying. It's not a requirement. I'm just saying, how, how do they know the condition of the structure if we haven't looked at the, the structure itself?
But I read, didn't I read that they want stamped drawings?
Yes. So...
They're going to have to get an engineer to sign off on this.
Correct. They, correct. It means we have to hire an engineer. We're trying to use V-Trans. So I've asked Chris to get ahold of them because they have an engineer on. And if we can leverage V-Trans engineer to help us out, that would be great. But I'll be, I guess I'll be cautiously optimistic about it.
Yeah. I've always been in favor of using other people's money too, but you can't always do that.
No. I'm on now, I'm switching over to page number eight, F, under Equipment. This is all under highway stuff. The, we just found out the new loader will be here the second week of June. Still haven't got an update on the, the transfer station truck yet. That's been eluding us, but Chris keeps trying. But second week of June for the loader. The Highway Garage, I'm on page nine now, I'm sorry. Highway Garage, we have a painter coming in this week to look at the garage for painting. It's after hours, so we let the police know if they see people snooping around up there, that it's the painters, hopefully, not people stealing catalytic converters. And we're, we're still trying to get another, another bid. Only one company responded to our bid. But there's a lot of metalwork that needs to be done as well. Stuff that's missing or broke, bent. Not repairable, I should say. I did ask, under Police Station Update, the site safety visit was conducted by Wade Maser from Passif on both the fire station, police station, and the town office and the beach. I've got the report back from the beach. I shared that with the select board, and I've shared it with Martha and the maintenance director up there. But they wrote up quite a bit of stuff up there that we've got to get fixed because there are going to be OSHA violations. So today I talked to the maintenance supervisor and sent to Martha so they can start addressing. Some are real, real easy fixes. Some of them are going to take a little bit more, like fences and repairing of fences. But a lot of it's just easy stuff like painting, fixing a picnic table or those type of things. And then the update that's also on Police Station...
Could I just jump in on that?
Yeah.
One of the things that I think we need to address is the water not being potable. And I don't remember exactly what we, what kind of signage we have, but it didn't strike me as being appropriate signage for a young child.
Okay.
And I think we need to take a look at that. Might even use the word potable. Thank you.
Okay? We'll follow up on that.
And then the door, this door over at the police station, I did send a message out asking them to, the chief to coordinate with you, Dick, to take a look at that.
I haven't heard from him yet, but it's only been a day, so...
Okay. It's probably, anything should hopefully be cheaper than $5,600 bucks.
Well, at least one of the possibilities.
Yes. Under page nine, Emergency Management, since I, since I wrote this, I've actually got a response back from the chief that he's not going to be here to do that tabletop exercise of, basically, what was this, using a vehicle as a weapon? Like, if somebody rams into a parade or, they're going to do a tabletop and virtual exercise to help us exercise our emergency management team. And it doesn't look like the chief is going to be available. So I got to rethink that one. Under, on page 10, nine, Fire Department Assistance to Firefighters Grant. I'm getting bombarded now with my email for grant writers. They're all this far out, this, I know we fell short on that before, but now's the time to look into getting a grant writer for the SCBA, the Self-contained Breathing Apparatus. That was $155,000 that they don't budget for or haven't budgeted for. And I put it, I asked, I put it on the ARPA list for you guys to consider, or not you guys, I'm sorry, sorry, Mary Lee, for the board to consider. But if we get a grant, it's not due right now. They, they're not going to come due right now. So if we actually were able to get the grant, then that wouldn't have to even consider it for ARPA. But trying to add $155,000 to the fire department's budget in one fiscal year is probably going to be a stretch, no matter how nice the voters are. So...
Aren't the assistance to firefighters grants due in the early winter, late fall?
Yeah, fall. So that's why they start this far out to get that done. So I, I brought this to you before, and I think that's worth paying the $1,500 or $500, depends on what you want to write it for, but anywhere from 15, $500 to $1,500 to hire the grant writer for getting something that's worth $400,000. Well, once I get some more data on it, on what companies are the best and what the cost may be, I'll come back to you. But I want to do that, like, shortly so we can get on somebody's list. And I did put the, the links in there. If you wanted to click on those links, I can send it to you by email, the report. I'll draw your attention, number 10, C, now the, page 10, nine, C, Operations, Meeting with the Fire Department Officers with the Public Safety Committee. Just to follow up on that so we can get something scheduled.
Is John, John suggesting all five officers meet? The Public Safety Committee?
That's what I, that's how I took it. We didn't talk numbers, but when they said that they fire officers, I'm assuming they meant all of them.
No. I just wanted to get that clarified.
Okay.
I'm on page 11, 10, Town Lands, Crystal Even Common Area, dilapidated docks. I, I put no action in there. What I'm going to do is, I, I asked a couple of the residents who made the complaints to please give me the dock number or what their complaint's about. I haven't received that as of yet. So I can reach out to the last known landowner for that dock and send him a letter saying, please remove your dilapidated docks. Because I think if we, if I have the town crew go up there, it means everybody's paying to, the taxpayers are paying to get somebody's dock removed. I just don't think that's as kosher, so I'd rather have the person that owns it be responsible. But we'll see. I don't, I don't know who it is yet. The trees, there's also trees that have fallen down, but they're all been removed, I was told. So somebody took their own initiative and removed them. I talked to you about the park and ride lights already. I'm on page number 12, under Recreation. So I reviewed the Recreation Job, Recreation Director's Job Description, made some changes, just mod, and I sent them to Martha. Nothing, it was just mostly grammatical or something like that. But, so we're going to advertise that position this week. And under, on page 13, under Public Concerns, you know all of them, blasting on Blissville, assisted living facility on Sand Hill, Village School, water main break on Main Street, and break-in of vehicles at the park and ride. And I got to add one more as a small grass fire, wildland fire that started on Main Street and reached somebody's garage. And they came in very irate and spoke with me. So I've addressed it with the fire warden. Pending your questions. That's it.
Questions for Mike?
No.
Joe? Mary Lee?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Thanks. Purchase orders for approval?
I didn't see any.
Come right here. Got them right here. You got them right here.
There's one that's like two million dollars.
That was a small one, right?
Okay.
Okay, first one, I make a motion to approve purchase order number zero four eight zero eight three, Levitt Communication for six pagers with a five-year warranty for a sum of two thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second? Second. Comments? This is budgeted, Mike?
Of course.
I just wondered, just to be sure. Okay. All right, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Another motion for purchase order number zero four eight four seven one to Webbs Incorporated for one check valve for the Bombazine Pumping Station for three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second. Discussion. This will come from the sewer budget, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion approved. Okay, moving on.
Warrants, you ready?
To the warrants.
Make a motion, we approve warrant, approve warrant number zero five two three for two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Warrant zero five one nine for five thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Warrant zero five one two for thirty-one thousand twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. Warrant zero five one nine P for seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents. And warrant zero five one two P for seventeen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second that.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
I would make a motion that we approve warrant number zero five two zero P for six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. And warrant zero five one three P for six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll second.
And a second. Discussion.
I recuse myself.
Dick recuses himself. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Are you going to need my signature? It'll be a couple days before I can come out.
Uh.
On two of them.
On two of them, yeah, we will. The last two, Joe?
The, the two that.
Dick recused himself on, yeah. Would need your signature for that, Mary Lee.
Okay, probably a couple days before I can leave on loan.
Okay. Okay, Select Board comments and/or concerns. Joe?
I have none. Oh, excuse me, I do have one. At our last meeting, I mentioned that I thought we should discuss and decide about and publicize our plans for the ARPA money.
Exactly.
So I would ask that that be made an agenda item for our next meeting.
So another.
So when you want it to be a discussion, or an agenda item, Joe, are you want to discuss possible dispersment of those funds, or?
No.
Just a plan for the process?
Process and timetable.
I'm totally on board with that.
Okay, anything else, Joe? Dick?
I'm good.
Mary Lee?
No.
Okay. Brief recap and items for follow-up. Is there anything on this? Seeing none. You need an executive session, Mike?
I, I don't need one for anything but a comment. Is the town's attorney that we retained on the school would like to talk to the board, but he wants to do it upfront in the meeting. So I, I told him no for this one, because we'd have to jump through hoops to get it changed around. So if you're good for next meeting, is it getting him upfront on the agenda to talk about the school stuff? I did have a meeting with him and the school's attorney and everything else. So he just wants to make some, you know, aware of some stuff on the, on the contract side. And, but I'm not sure if Dick and Joe want to talk about.
We do.
Okay, no, the PBA.
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session with the board and the town manager for contracts, labor relations.
Labor Relations Contracts, yes.
Contracts and Labor Relations at.
Nine fifty.
Eight fifty-six.
Eight fifty-six, yeah. All those, all those in favor?
There's no second one there.
Lemon, you have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor entering executive session, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
We're in executive session.